And the fact that you hear number 7.3. It was late, what people have been working on. With that, the first thing we've got is our accountants are here to present our, the results of our audit for last year, 2021. A little late, and I've already heard murmurs between Ben and Jill. Next year, we're getting into them in February. This year, part of the problem was we didn't have the financial. Correct. So next year, that, that's all been resolved, and next year, I'm gonna get it to you soon.
Yeah, I think we started the process, well, we started the process where we were extending down all the issues happened, and we want to fix the financial information of September or something like that.
Yeah.
But we're all committed to going forward, getting it done, because I think it's important for you to get it done sooner as well.
Alright, yeah. The AUD, which is written, it's based on this, I believe it's June 1.
June, I believe it's April 30.
April 30?
Yeah, which, I know we helped Jill with the numbers this year, we got that filed.
Yeah. I believe it is.
We'll beat all that.
Okay, so show is yours.
Alright, thank you. This year made it a little easy for you. We kind of put together our PowerPoint presentation. Rather than we having to look through the financial statements or any of that, we kind of just summarized everything in the PowerPoint about that these years, then put it through reports. I'm gonna pretty much go through the audit communications information, which you can see on slide one.
I need to change that word.
That's right, it's not on the screen.
Hey, John. Okay, okay, thank you. And we can run that if you want to. But pretty much, I'll go through the audit communication with you, and that's basically just an understanding between us as the auditors and the board of directors, the board trustees. And it basically, it's your fiduciary responsibility to understand the financial reporting process and what relates to an audit and how an audit is conducted. It's our responsibility to basically give an opinion related to the financial statements in accordance with what we refer to as generally accepted accounting principles. In, in giving our opinion, we basically look at one key concept, it's called reasonable assurance. Reasonable assurance allows us to test certain transactions in certain areas where we feel the risk is related to the organizations. We don't give absolute assurance, we, we can't audit 100% of your transactions, which would just not be effective for you or us, or cost beneficial for that matter. So with that said, we kind of think the approach, when we look at where the areas are of significance, and audit those information, make sure the financial statements, all the numbers are accurate as a secondary person. We gained an understanding of the internal control, talked to Jill in regards to what are the procedures, what are the operational policies that are out there? How are they being adhered to, to make sure there was nothing significant to report to you? There were no significant matters that we felt needed to be reported based on the information. Once we got the financial information, everything was in order. There were very few, if any, journal entries, most of the journal entries, to be honest, just related to depreciation schedule. So we assisted Jill in regards to that. Technically, I probably don't even need to put that in there, but we always just communicate that, those were the adjustments. But there was really nothing wrong in regards to those journal entries. The scope of the audit, we kind of started everything, like I said, in February, we sent you out with the financial indication, but then we kind of had a halt there from the while until we received the information in August. Once we received this information in August, we did our procedures. We did our documentation, as I said, in regards to the internal control and processes. Certain areas of testing were the net assets with donor restrictions, as you've seen with grants. They got restrictions related to them, so we had to see that those restrictions were met and reclassify them to what we refer to as net assets without restrictions. Do substantive audit procedures on the assets and liabilities and analytical procedures over the revenue and expense based on expectations that we developed based on our discussion. Cleanup was done October, and I think we issued sometime in November the financial statements that were final in regards to the audit. The audit also goes through an independent technical review to make sure that there's certain things out there that were following the standards, that I've issued everything I should be doing in regards to it, and if there were any issues, there were none of those. There really were no changes to any of the standards in the current year that could impact your financial statements. One standard that either could not go forward, impact your statements, and I'll be talking to you about this in December, could be if you have any leases out there. If you have leases, you know, that's gonna be a big standard, just your most not-for-profits, you'll have to capitalize those on your balance. So just something to be aware of. You still can't look at material, you can't see if it's not material, however, that is something that's big on the horizon related to not-for-profits. On the next slide, you know, in regards to the audit communication, we also talked about, this is the conclusion one, so after the audit, we basically issue another letter, and this, this letter basically summarizes the information of what happened during the audit process. As you can see, note two to the financial statements, we disclose all the policies related to the financial statements. I'm just here to say there were no changes to any of those policies, as I said, there really were no standard changes in the current year, and all your transactions are recorded in the proper period in regards to cutoffs and things of that, so no issues. Accounting estimates, they were disclosed in reasonable, just slide ahead, that's okay. Accounting estimates are disclosed and reasonable to the, to the financial statements. Your most significant estimate out there is depreciation. You have what we call assets that can be depreciated for a certain amount of years. So you gotta look at that, the lives that you've calculated in a reasonable one year to the next. We worked a lot with Jill this year, cleaned up that schedule, so that it was, took a lot of the assets that were old off that schedule, and so it more of a, a schedule that reflects what's accurately what we kind of have out there as a not-for-profit. So we did adjust that schedule in the current year, we had such a long trajectory to reflect our means of that. We evaluated all those key factors, all the assumptions that were, that were doing those estimates, and we feel that everything is proper after that. Difficulties, we didn't have any difficulties in court counter in the audit. Corrected and uncorrected statements, as I indicated before, journal entries, you know, that we recorded related to the statements, nothing that's significant for, for the matter that, you know, needs to be disclosed, they're just depreciation entries for the most part. We have a, we have a right to pass on certain adjustments. In the audit, if we come across something that something was wrong, we thought, you know, say, well, that's definitely material. Jill said, wow, they want to record that, we didn't have any of those. Any adjustment that we proposed, they were worth it, we just need to adjust them a little bit. Disagreements, we did not have any disagreements that were out there. We did ask Jill to sign a representation letter on October 31st, which is the date you'll see within all the reports. It's basically the date that basically Jill accepted the responsibility for financial statements, and she provided us all the information that we need. Consultation, if you wanted a second opinion, a lot of time, you know, I shouldn't say a lot of time. Sometimes if you disagreed with me in regards to a standards, we just want to make sure that other accountant has all the relevant facts. There was none of that to report to you in the current year. Most importantly, the other audit findings or issues is, I'm just here to say, we are independent of the organization. We are not involved in your day-to-day transactions. I know we had some discussions in whether helping to adjust certain things here or there. We kind of take the outside approach, that we're your auditors, we don't get involved in your day-to-day transactions, which I think is a better approach in regards to, so you don't money things up and nothing that could affect you, no one can look at us and say, how can you give us opinion when you're adjusting our numbers in the record keeping process? So we're not involved in any of that for your transactional reporting. Any questions on the audit communications? I'll turn it over to Nick now, he's just gonna go through a summary of the assets, the balance sheet, and the income statement, things of that nature.
Alright, perfect. So I guess before we get started, I know my dad briefly talked about it, does anyone not understand the difference between without donor restriction and with donor restriction? Because you do have two columns on your financial statements.
Okay.
You say you understand it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so we'll start off with recurrent assets, which mainly consist of cash for you guys, well, only consists of cash. You did have an increase of cash in the current year, as you can see. Went from 1163 to about, or 11, went from 1122 to 1163. Your other assets consist of your fixed assets, which, as you can see, we did have a decrease in the current year, and that's because we sat down with Jill, and I know if, for people who were here last year, we talked about changing your fixed asset policy, which you guys did. So we went through, cleaned up your fixed assets, and that's why you had a disposal in the current year.
And most of it was disposals that were fully depreciated. We did not take off anything on the schedule that wasn't fully depreciated. So that really, really was just a decrease of your gross fixed assets, as well as a decrease of your unit depreciation. So that's why the net kind of remains relatively consistent.
Yeah. Alright, on to the next slide. So we have current liabilities for you guys of 1,045. That really just consists of your current revenue. You'll see the slight increase, I mean, it's pretty comparable from year to year. It have, your net assets did decrease in the current year. As you can see, we will talk about that more in depth when we talk about the state. So if you want to go to the other thing, Jill. Okay. Now, again, as you see, a decrease in revenue. That is mainly due to the fact that you did not receive grants in UCD prior year, like the construction grant. That, that was the main portion of your grant revenue last year. Yeah, the tax revenue stayed the same, obviously, slight increase. And that's about it for your revenue portion.
Yeah, there really was no changes in the total revenue from one year to the next. As in, Nick indicated, most of it just related to the grants related to the construction. And I just want to do note that these statements are modified cash basis, and you might say, what is modified cash basis? It basically just reflects liabilities that are only related, related to it, more than credit card type of things. If it was a full accrual basis, you would have your accounts payable on there, you'd have any GASB liabilities that are out there. And because the way they're reported required by the AUD that you got, you filed, it's more consistently follows this approach in a full accrual basis type financial statements. So that's why you see that we don't get more liabilities on the books within these financial statements.
Onto your expenses. As you can see, your program expenses slightly increased in the current year. And you did have a net loss, or yeah, net loss of $59,000. And if we want to go to the next slide, we can get into detail why your expenses increased. So as you see, your salaries and related fringe benefits increase in the current year, and that is mainly due to the fact that you all decided to prepay your nice slash payment in December. Usually, you paid that in January, but in the current year, you paid that in December, which caused an increase in your expenses and mainly led to a loss in the current year. But I know that you guys talked about that, and you overall think it'll be better for the organization, so.
And that's really what drove it, I mean, that's really what the significant change in net assets were, and why you had a decrease in one year and the next, mainly that was the primary.
Yeah, if you take out the prepaid payment, then you'd have a solid net, or gross profit in the end of the year, net profit. Onto the next.
Next slide, you'll see you had a revenue growth basically decreased, and once again, this is just a slide we put up just to show you, and this really is grant-based, and if you didn't have, if you had grants consistent from year to year, you would basically, that number would continually go up, but because then you have the grant in the current year, you had a decrease in regards to the revenue growth. This is a good slide to talk about in regards to program expenditures versus total expenditures, and you might say, well, what is this? This is a slide that represents how much, how many dollars here are spent related to the program activities of the library versus, say, administration or fundraising. It's always a good slide if you're looking for donors or things to give more money to the organization and to reach out, and you can show them you're spending about nine, almost 91 cents of every dollar to the mission of the library. It's not going to spend for other types of things that are out there. So I always think this is important to show not-for-profit, because they want, they want to see this component. And the standard we're, has been very diligent to basically want to see the admin percentage decrease in not-for-profit organizations. So if you look at the next slide, you can see your admin percentages are about 9%, which are very consistent from year to year. About, I want to say, three to four years ago, the governor's office put out a mandate that they wanted to see not-for-profit organizations under 20 to 20%, but then they backed it down to 15%. So they're really striving to have admin costs be less and less, because they want the not-for-profit dollars that donors are giving to them to go to the programmatic mission of the organization. So I showed that, because I think it's important that you're on the right track, and it's a good thing to monitor that. We have to, you have to look at it, you know, in the way too, that if you continue to grow, well, your cost of admin's got to build too with it, but for the most part, I think you're on the right track. Most of the not-for-profits that we see are roughly about 10% is their administrative. The notes to the financial statements, these are just summary. Once again, there really, really were no significant changes from the prior year. Note one is just the nature of operations of the library. Note two talks about the summary of significant accounting policies, like I said, they did not change from one year to the next. We did, on page nine, that's where those significant accounting policies start related to the organization. Note two talks about revenue recognition, it talks about that, if you have grants and things of that, which you have, how do you recognize those grants? And, you know, they are, they are expense-based, so we recognize the grant revenue based on how expenses are spent and things of that nature. So that's disclosed on page 11. And we see the most important one is the liquidity and availability of financial assets. It talks about, you might have heard the concept of a current ratio, what are your current assets as they compare to your current liabilities? Or a couple of years back, the schedule's changed, and it's to show you how liquid you are in regards to a cash core, a number respectfully. And that's where note three of the financial statements gets into that detail and, and talks about it. I'll just say, you know, your financial assets, which basically consist of your cash, is about $1,163,000. What do you have? You have donor restrictions, meaning related things that need to spend related to the grant, because there's temporarily restrictions on them, and that's about $23,000. So going into next year, you have almost $1,140,000 of liquid cash to pay for your expenses before you begin the start of the year. So you're very, you're in a very liquid, liquid position as an organization. So that's why I always say, and we can see you're going in the right trend. If you look at it from last year to this year, your cash is very, you know, you went higher from one year to the next. Note six talks about the pension plan, Nick already detailed that for you to basically go through and tell you you had an increase in the budget cost, and that was just a strategy of the board, because you think there'll be savings and things of that going forward. Note seven talks about commitments and contingencies that you have out there. There's really nothing that's, it basically was the reader on notice that you do have a grant, a third party can come in, the, the group of estate, and come in and audit that grant, and they could disallow something, but based on our testing, we don't see that happening, nor have there been any audits out there that we're aware of. Concentration is just discussion that most, the majority of your money's coming from the down here, so that, that discusses that, and we just put the reader on notice of that. And last but not least, I'm, I'm hoping this year we can finally get rid of this note. It is nice to see everybody's faces this year, I must say, versus wearing the mask. But we talked about the subsequent event in regards to COVID-19, and we basically put the reader on notice, still out there, but we think that's going away, and I really think this note will come out of the financial statements going forward this year, unless something happens differently, unless. Any questions, or is it summary, or?
The last thing, the summary. The issue you guys have, unmodified opinion, as you'll see on the first two pages of the financial statements, that's basically the cleanest opinion you can get, the best. So you did a good job as an organization. And, yeah, any questions?
Anybody got anything? No, I have one.
Sure.
I found it when I first got the, I mean.
I have a feeling I know what it is.
I know you know what I'm gonna say, because I talked to Jill about it, and I figured she'd talk to you about it. The way you presented it there is fine. So next year, even if you have to print it, landscape.
All the landscape, okay.
Get the two years on the one, because it, it is so difficult to sit here and we keep multiple pages.
Do you want to do comparative totals?
Yes.
Yes, I like that better myself. So I can easily, we can easily interchange that going forward. Some, some boards like to have both years, and they can't put both years on a page, but I like.
When you're gonna go landscape, if you can, I'd put that down. You can do a landscape, because I've always, for, for us to evaluate and evaluate it quickly, the question is always, okay, how will we prepare the landscape?
Now, you, are you okay with having comparative totals like we have? Because I think putting the both years on a landscape will be, you know, while we know.
It, it, to me, it was fine the way you presented it.
So comparative totals, and that's most organizations who are gonna.
The one you said next year gets started.
The only other thing I had was, we had a loss. And the loss was attributable to the payment to our engine fund. Oh, my quick math, when I looked at it, the loss difference was greater than. I tried to read the slide fast.
No, it was, I'm correct, there were two payments that were made, two, you almost, there was two payments that were made for the pension amount.
Even one year, 165 was the second one.
Correct.
Correct. And. And your loss was only about $59,000. If you didn't have that.
So you do it that way, alright, yes. I would say, another spot, you showed comparative of the two years, and the numbers were more, it was 1, 800 something, and then. That's got the depreciation.
Yeah. But, you know, like I said, I think, you know, next year we'll make sure they get comparative.
Appreciate it. Okay, alright. Anybody have any other questions?
Anything?
If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all the time.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your touch.
And you have a choice, if you need to speak out loud.
I'm trying to go forward. I can sit here for a while. Today I was telling Jill, today's the deadline for not-for-profit. So, so unfortunately, we had a couple of files that waited till the last second. So I have to go get the submit button, because I have a lot of hours.
So I would love to stay, but.
Thank you for coming.
You came up with a good excuse.
Next year I can use that. Take care now, everyone. Okay.
It's later.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Approval of minutes.
I didn't hear anything.
Just means she did a great job the first time. If anybody had any questions or changes or. I just had two little things that I wanted to mention to say. We had put, uh, meanings, next year, the reinstitute action items that used to get some with minutes. Also, the motions are all listed. It, it's in teams, so for the whole year, if anybody. So I wanted to read rule motions. They're there, so.
Next.
Here we go, okay. As far as the off warrant goes, I identified there's three different sources of funding and some specific notes on them. I mean, I want to draw your attention to National Bridge, because I hate to say it this way, down to $2,700 this month, but that's the second month in a row that it's been down almost $1,000 each month, so. Saying, of course, these are those shoulder months. So you can expect it'll probably bump back up as the snow flies, like today, but we will enjoy it while we have it.
Are the rates staying fairly constant?
Rates definitely went up, but they're not, they haven't, as far as I, I haven't really looked in the last two months at them, so.
You know, is it, is it usage or is it rates?
No, it was rates.
It was rates. The usage was definitely actually lower, because everything were not.
You're not needing.
Well, no, it's like, they have a five month for the last 14 months, and you can sort of compare year to year. And of course, it was.
It had nothing to do with the H-bat.
I think, meaning, I think it was mostly rates. It's on usage.
The heat pumps are basically like your, and they're running compressors, where they heat your full space. The cooling, actual cooling is other than the running of that unit, which is like if you have, picture it as a a heat pump at home, or an air conditioner at home, that got a compressor on it that uses electricity. That's gonna be fairly constant, no matter what you're doing. There's a loop of water, you take heat out or put heat in. And the cooling is just rejected out, cooling tower, so it's not that. When we get into heating, we have people who just provide gas. So now bringing the gas side. Well, wouldn't know much about changes.
I just have usage, so usage in 22, our electric usage in October was up. Was up this month, the usage. For that, and the other ones were not, the other ones.
But I remember when we were looking, gas was the one that was really.
Yeah, I do have, I have it all on a spreadsheet, but it's not.
That's okay.
Okay, hold on. The New York State unemployment, just to let you know, that's what the operating contingency reserve amount was. So be sure for unemployment, so that gives the third quarter.
You seem close to finish.
I think this is the last one. So that's that.
And this is a quarter, so three times that, 4,500 roughly.
Any questions about the off warrant expenses?
Sure. Would you accept the off warrant in the amount of $149,047? We're going to accept the off warrant in the amount of 149,047.1 cents. For the period of October.
Anybody have any questions?
Comments?
Ma'am, favor?
Okay, the warrant, um, for this month. Here's the summary. Because we paid our nice. The remarkable thing was our nice first four this year, and this is the conversation we just had. We paid it in the fall, and it was significantly less than our budgeted amount. And then last year, it was only down 35,000. So payment has been made, that was 126,000 dollars. Second has been good, I should say. In addition to that, this month, the warrant is the last of the AP equipment for the construction branch. In about 37,277, which is why you see an entry under capital. Anybody have any questions about any of the warrants?
Okay, somebody want to make the motion that authorizes, and I've noticed we've changed it to just authorizing the signing of it. We typically, it was typically always authorizing the president to sign it. I know, it's the first time I noticed it. Theoretically, if you authorize a signing, anybody can sign it.
President.
Authorize the president to sign.
And I don't.
Or it authorizes, I mean, you put it on. Shows you how close they are. This, this month. Amy. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Okay. The year is 86% over. It's like, uh. It's been a really good four year inflation, and we've been. Still are expecting to finish under budget, so Jill has begun to do the year end kind of projections right now. We're looking for. Believe that we will actually be able to transfer the budget in 69 now, 250 reserve funds, as it looks right now. Total income is 99.4% of budget. And this is the receipt of a thousand dollar. Signing of that. And so any income at this point is free. Over budget areas, utility facilities, without question. Specifically, two parts of that budget, one is prepared maintenance and equipment. And over, we have a lot. Preparers this year, and then the utility costs, which are already at 136% of budget. And it's also another one that we have over budget. Yes, it is, you're right, it is. So it is the insurance and the utilities. Professional services are over budget, but I think that's kind of even.
Those are all quarterly, so a lot of it's quarterly.
Personnel, we paid 23 of our 26 payrolls so far, and we paid the NICE bill, and the SLOB's, and the RTO.
We still have some of those. We have some unfun, we have some positions that we haven't filled.
All the majors, and we have prepaid laws, like 40 of the budget. That reside, which is such a big part of the budget. Okay, as far as the balance sheet, our cash assets. Are a bit down, 1.5 million. About 355,000 less because of the payment to NICE plus it was a fee table. So those two together, they're. Okay, uh, and then I will draw your attention. Our auditors talked about the depreciation, so this actually, this one shows the actual change in depreciation. So you think that the appreciation numbers, which are the fixed asset, and you will actually see a change from last month. Removed everything, well, they removed everything that had been fully depreciated. In addition, we applied a new $5,000 threshold, if I'm correct. I think that was something, okay. Definitely, for the new year.
Oh, you guys won't be making that tonight.
Oh, okay. I am, okay, so I will have to change my minute, my notes. My report. So we removed the items that were fully depreciated as a result.
But some of the things that we still own that are still in the budget, that's the last.
So the total fixed assets dropped by 40,000. Six zero three two one four one. So I just wanted to let you know that the depreciation that actually shows in this month.
This brings to mind, one point, the same made at the end of the year, we had 1.1 trillion dollars to the good. To, uh, that we were. We have to remember that a portion of that is because we don't get our money till March. So while we're on a calendar year recording, we're ruling out March to March in operating year, so. You have to have that cushion sitting there.
Yeah, and that's at least 400,000 that we need for this operation.
Roughly 200,000.
Well, before, we used to do nice versus January, how it.
I was going to say, it really depends on any, there are some related, and some being, but let's say. I'd say 400,000 would cover us, many want a little, so that's quite a bit of that. Any questions about the, uh, financials?
So you expect to, at the end of the year, have a fun balance, positive fund balance after paying November, next year's, December's?
Well, because we didn't pay one in the spring, it was the one year effect last year where we made two payments.
Will the overage cover the January, February, March, or no, we will remain over inclusive of that additional?
Uh, I'm just, you're saying, oh, I think we're talking about different things, so we were talking about liquidity in what we need in order to be able to continue to operate till March, when our. Couple funds come in. We're now talking about, will we be under budget for the year? And then we'll say yes, we won't be under budget, and then the next, early next year, we will decide. One of the budget lines is this 165,000 to go into reserve funds. So here, we will be able to do that, and there may, in addition to that, be a bit more. After we won't know till the end of the year, the financials are each year, but. Looks like we'll still be able to do the money to reserve and also have a little more. During the last.
165 looks pretty firm.
It does look pretty.
Looks like a good chunk of the overage in facilities came from the NICE's. And it, you know, has gone back now. What was it, 120 something?
It was 125, and we budgeted 165, so it was basically 40,000.
So that's the thing that really saved us from the huge cost this year.
That, the amount, the 126, that's, uh, like, prepaying, but like, you get a discount for a few things.
Well, the discount used to be really significant. We used to do this all the time, once we first joined, we did this all the time. And discount with higher interest rates and such that we had back then was, it was like 10 or 15,000 dollars. It's probably only about 2,000 now. But it is still a discount, you know, 2,000 is 2,000, whatever it is. And if we have the money, why not pay it?
Well, it also feels a way more. End of the year, then the beginning of the year, we. Any other questions?
Entertained a motion to approve the funding. Any further discussion?
What the board would say. Now we do, I just got to update this. Where, you know. That line is. It really is based on the auditor recommendations.
Yeah, so what we did was, we removed anything that was lower, there were things on there that were. 20 dollars, 300, you know, 800 dollars, we removed everything that were below the 2,000 dollar threshold. Based on last year, now the new depreciation policy that you will prove it over time increases that to 5,000, which is the amount. Lower than last year, what we do.
So how does that adjust in terms of?
The things won't go into those assets, things under 5,000 will just be the expense.
It's expense like in, it was like a book.
You'll see it on the, yeah, on the, like, I can't.
As an expansion, there will be an expense, something which is worth more than 5,000 dollars will be depreciated over 3.57 or whatever. And basically, the other thing was, it just cleaned up, because it's something. Basically, what's happened is that with the previous auditors, they would just give us.
A journal entry.
Journal entry to put in there to adjust it, somehow they did it, I don't know how or why.
Nobody knew the depreciation was.
And, you know, now, these guys have sort of pushed us to make it correct. So we've gone through the process of correcting it, and I believe Jill, you're now going to do it monthly.
Next year.
So my question is, I want to correct the sentence, because it says 5,000, so it's erroneous, so I. And we, I think it's even there is that enough, I can see all of you, it says, based on the auditor's recommendations, items that fell below the threshold of 2,500 were removed, as were items that were fully depreciated and no longer in service.
Yeah.
I'll get it to you there.
Okay. We have both. We have rates on.
Vote again.
Let's vote again, all favor.
That's good for me.
Okay. Many reports.
So, um, we're still working on the GA AP ones, but that's a long haul project, as we all know. Most of our meeting was about the on in, as you saw us presented, as well as the.
AD.
The AP, yes. That was the.
Depreciation.
Depreciation, yeah, that's the one, the thing we were just talking about. We worked on, we recommended the policy to change it to 5,000 dollars, as we stated, that would take effect January 1st. If anyone has any objection, I'd like to.
So. Well, you know, when I. The committee makes the motion, and then somebody else has to second. So it probably should be somebody who's not on the committee.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and say that motion. Uh, the appreciative capital asset policy, so that's starting with. We're all in agreement to raise it to 5,000.
Have a second on that.
A second. The raises it to 5,000, and also, I think another big change is that starting January 1st, we'll depre, instead of depreciating once a year, it'll be a depreciation each month, so every single month, the financials will show a small one. A little cleaner.
Any further discussion on that one, if not all in favor? Can you be next?
Sure, um, I want to approach the 2021 year meeting. Remember that they were not in printed copies, because that's really.
Okay.
21, 22 pages.
Please correct the saving or not, please. Um, I just. Won't help myself, I noticed that the quotes were wrong in the, um, report.
Really, it does seem interesting.
The last page, so under demographics, it has 12056, and chief fiscal officer has 12056.
Catch me.
That's really good, I'm not getting it, I'm telling you.
Wanted to push your old home address.
So the motion to prove it as amended is incorrect.
Oh.
Mary, you have the EAGLE line today.
You are so good.
You know, I sent this to auditors to have them check it.
And I'm gonna say, it's probably been like that for years.
Mary would have quoted it years ago.
To who seconded?
We didn't get a second.
We didn't get a second, yeah. Many. Okay. Oh, any further discussions or corrections? All in favor? Any post? Okay, and then third one?
Is to accept the 2021 audit as presented today.
So like, nobody had any strange suggestions or.
All in favor?
What?
We're all going to have to put that here.
Last thing on my checklist for the year.
Yes.
And, uh, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay.
I mean, we also discussed the fine free policy, but that's also service committee, so. It became a blended.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, well, the motion is in the next one. Under service. Um, service committee.
So, uh, we met to discuss a few things, one being the first that you have the social media policy, which is a new policy we didn't, uh, have. And if you read through that, social media includes, not limit, but it's not limited to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, TikTok. Um, you know, it governs the use of the library's social media accounts, um, publication of comments and staff responses. Um, we talked about, uh, if there's something, as an example, on the library Facebook page that was not appropriate, could we, as an organization, remove that? And yes, um, we could. These are the, if you look versus publication of comments, um, the, the following type of negative comment, and anything falling in that would certainly be removed. So it's good to have, I mean, it's the times that we, you know, we obviously need to have some policy in place. So the service committee met and approved this social media policy. So is there a second?
Any comments, questions, other than discussion?
I just wanted to ask, the rules of conduct for libraries, or is that, that's the one?
There's a policy.
There's a whole policy. All in favor?
Who was the second?
Also, uh, at the meeting, discussed, um, a new policy of photography and filming. So this is kind of an interesting, um, situation that we may or may not find ourselves in, where people could potentially come into the library and just start filming. Just taking videos, and then, uh, what they do is put it up on social media. And however many, um, views this video would potentially get, they could, they could potentially earn money from this. So, um, while we are, you know, public space, we are a limited public forum. Um, so people could potentially come in here and film, but we like, you know, limiting what, what, what are they filming? You know, are they infringing upon patrons' privacy and their, uh, this enjoyment here? So.
I think the big point that was made is that they have a tendency to confront.
Oh, right, and that's, yes.
Do some confrontation, because of course, the more confrontation, the more provocative, it's the more future.
More provocative, yes, right.
And, uh, and Jill told us, it's happened at, um.
Oh.
Yes. Where do you go with it?
And they recommend, uh, libraries or managers recommend that really let them, you have a policy, so you have something there, but you let them come in, film. Um, just make sure that they're not filming patrons' interactions. And if you, you know, kind of have your policy on a particular, uh, case they're in. You know, he's the right for the policy, but usually they don't because they've got a very specific thing that they're trying to do, and that's, you know, get under your skin for.
Oh, and that's more.
That's what they do, right?
Yeah. So they'll just film, and then they'll leave, and it'll never blow up on YouTube.
Hopefully, that's the point.
That's the point.
That will make you one of them.
Yeah, right. So. So, um, I'd like to make the motion to approve the new photography and filming policy. Second, here.
Other than discussion, comments, or questions, if not, all in favor?
Last, um, we talked in length about, um, approving or not amnesty for late fees incurred, uh, prior to the fine free policy, which will start January first. And, and would not extend, as it says here, to lost damage items and, um, bigger ticket items are not, you know, that's right, bigger, I think, elaborate things, right, not specialty items, right?
Yeah. Now, um, I have one question.
Should I make the motion and then?
Sure.
Alright, sorry.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
You're gonna fall.
No.
Uh, so the service committee is, um, looking for approval, um, to, uh, approve amnesty for late fees incurred prior to the fine fee, fine fee, fine free policy starting January first.
The fine, the late fees, fines. Does that include, and, and does that include fines and late fees for big ticket items? No, it doesn't include with your charge form, but what about those fines? Which I think are a little higher than.
At least they're keeping them. Right, I, I think it's just. What is our most?
Because I think.
I could probably, I think I could probably separate it, so we should put that.
Can, can we?
Comment the motion.
We shouldn't comment the motion. That it really.
Can you, can you replace me? There are specialty items or fines for that.
Well, if, if fines, see, there's, there's replacement cost, that's what this says, the replacement cost doesn't go away. But the fines that you incur if you return one of these things late.
We amended to say, or fines for specialty items. And amnesty does not extend to lost damage item replacement or fines or specialty.
Okay, that works, that works. So now we have a motion that has amended. And the second, you second, same, same to. Any further questions or discussion?
Just as a problem for this question, I think we have, but as amended, but it's, there is a.
Okay, that's fine, however. Anything else?
Sure, we were gonna talk about the staff holidays. Of December, that's another.
Okay, alright, yeah, well.
And a little. Oh, right, um, we did have winners.
How did I put that in my board?
Right. Um, so the winners, the two winners of Little Free Libraries are Rail Trail Tales and Run Ride Feed, or Rail Trail Tale, I gotta thank you. And Run Ride Feed. Thank you all for voting and. Yeah, like contributing and supporting.
So will they actually say those names?
Yes, they're gonna have on the little, um, metal.
Oh, wow.
You know, it'll register with the little library or national. Those menus, yep.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Directors report.
Okay, so this month, um, exciting month with Halloween. Plus, it's our favorite time of the month in the library because we have kids, you know, all the time in costumes for our good celebration, and the new parades, and for the past couple of years, we've done outdoor parties. This year, we brought them back inside, and they came back to the, they'd like to come in the back offices because it's just really exciting, and everybody, parents, new grandparents, all the grandparents now are just so surprised at the, those offices. Yes, oh my goodness.
Yes.
Uh, but it's really fun, and we all, so we do, that was a lot of fun. He was also the friend Bookstall, and so that's wonderful, how the whole school Bookstall. Uh, meeting rooms opened October first. This was a good area, it was open. Audit, we completed our audit, and really large part of this month has been prepping for, um, books for the new year, closing out the audit, we decided. And, uh, prepping for QuickBooks, and then Kerry is, we've been working a lot on this I T cybersecurity project. There's a lot we can tell you. The report that I put, I can forward right now, we have questions, it's totally more than you wanna know, but, um, we, we're making some good progress. All of our staff did earlier, we sectioned our. We said that for adult services. So our head of adult services was, she had a, uh, vacation. So, kind of corresponded with your stats before, so. I did get a little bit prepared to put in here, but I decided to hold on to all of the programming stats I'll put in here for two months of the next quarter for old teens and adults, so that.
That is for Jill. Keep moving, this is great.
Ooh.
After the accountants took up all the time. Liaison report, it's friends.
So, we, at the meeting, elected a new slate of officers for twenty twenty three. So Julian is gonna be the president starting next year, very excited, so, um, so it's been a good time. We've got a whole new, uh, number of kind of co-chairs, so there's a good, um, good, fostering a good synergy of folks and, uh, help permeate ideas um, as they pop up, so, um, super exciting to, uh, to see what, uh, fresh bases can bring to, uh, enhance the work that the friends do.
Right. Well, tomorrow night, we, uh.
From town, I thought you said, come up. His name is Ed.
No, I started with friends, then I'm going to town, and I'm gonna do Rensler County. And then Upper Hudson.
Uh, so this year's budget is gonna be passed tomorrow night. On that, all the highway, uh, road paving projects are completed for the year, will not be seeing, should not be seeing. Right there, should not be seeing any paving action or anything, um.
So was that, does that mean like all of the projects were completed, or they, they're just done paving and there's more projects?
There'll be more projects, actually, there always is. Every year, every year, we got certain, yeah. They go around and reevaluate the roads, and every year, and slower, these people. I see they did do the other half.
I know, thank you for that.
So did they do the other half of, uh, Old River?
That's maniac's room, it was like, ooh.
No, this was actually, you know, I remember, so there'll be a, the hearing or meeting. Closing of the bridge on Old River, permanently, there's, there are people that wanna come and people don't wanna really. I live, I originally lived right there. Tradition, it was a nice, a nice little farm. Yeah, the bridge is, that's many repairs, and every now and then, do over, overdo. Yeah, our most side, both sides, yeah. Maybe surprise some of the people that said they wanna close, and some of the people that's not live right here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
It'll be interesting, hopefully it'll be.
Alright, that's about it. Okay. County?
We're working our way through the budget process. We've had our first budget hearing, grappling with it, we're gonna have a couple more hearings. It's not at the contentious level yet, but it's got potential to get there. To keep you opposed to, emergency services tower project seems to still be, uh, on schedule with a completion date anticipated at the end of twenty, spring of twenty twenty three. Now, I put in last month, the county office moves are continuing, they are continuing in pace. The DMV office, uh, which I mentioned last month, uh, is gonna be on site, but that probably won't open up until right around January of two thousand twenty four. Oh, wow. Yeah, yeah. Uh, and that'll combine the East Green Bush and Skodak side rail also, so if you used to go on East Green Bush or Skodak for your DMV, you've got another unit easing to your. Um, that's about it, uh, you know, we'll, we'll keep you posted next month on the, on the budget results.
Alright, so Upper Hudson, we have board meeting. Um, again, I, I really like being on the boards, it's really a great, diverse board. Uh, so a couple of things, um, they, we, we presented our budget for the upcoming year, so just, you know, just a solid budget, um, for the upcoming year, really, well done by Fred. Um, Upper Hudson Board, uh, did sign on as a partner organization to, uh, the ALAs, is it American Library Association, or, yeah. Um, Unite Against Book Bans Initiative. Um, it's a national initiative to empower readers everywhere to stand together in the fight against censorship, which is awesome. Um, couple things, uh, Senator Breslin directed a total of ninety nine thousand dollars in special legislative funding to six Upper Hudson library locations, um, so, uh, Albany Public Library, Washington Ave, Arbor Hill, Coase, Rensler, Waterbloom, and Troy. And this is another awesome one, um, Assembly member, now it's a Senator, Jake Ashby, directed twenty five thousand dollars to Castleton. And, um, oh, the Ulan. That word, more than a word around here, the Ulan, my career is going up, um, our justice going up. And there was the Nyla Con- Conference, which was well attended, and Jill won't speak to that at any point, but really great, um, uh, speakers and workshops, and I'd love to see, um, maybe there was a couple that really were interesting. When I looked at the program, I couldn't attend, so I was out of town. Um, but maybe doing a board retreat in the new year and having, um, one or two, um, presenters from that conference to speak, you know, at our board retreat if, if interested. Um, and Colony is in their strategic, they're, started their strategic. Of course they are, like, I, I, that's why, but anyway, that's still a lot going on, and, you know, there's still this office space there, um, and they really encourage anyone, um, And they really encourage anyone who knows anyone or hears about anyone needing office space. It's really a great space, you know, nice parking, it's got everything going on there, clean space. They could use some tenants, but they're fine financially. But if you know of anyone that's looking for office space.
Now, we still have to discuss, and we'll put it on till December, our contract. I realize that I skipped over this person.
Page 31. Is the 2023 salary schedule. This is what was included in the budget and what was recommended by the Commission Study Committee. Right, or official?
Any comments, questions? If not. Paper. My text is pretty much.
We still have to install, we have a little bit left, but the AV is pretty much. And we have to close out the rear. But it's a massive project, it's 99.9% done. All the moving parts are fairly little left. Painting is not going to be done by outside, it's a whole.
We, I know, probably not what you wanted to ask, but if we wanted to apply an interior worth, the timeline?
September, August, we need to do it, we need to decide during our budget season.
Yeah, you have to sort of plan it in May, June, and July initially, because Upper Hudson likes to get an idea where people.
August 1st.
August 1st, so. But you've got to have, do enough homework so that you know mostly what you're gonna go for.
Yeah, when do they close it? Don't they have, don't they each year kind of have a different focus?
No, no, it's just construction grant. And whatever Jill can figure out, manipulate into it is what we do. For a while, we were going for one every year with COVID, everything else. But it slipped a few years, so it didn't really get in. That's where you saw the number 150,000 on the grants.
Yeah.
That today, 2020, and now we're 2020 and 21, dropped down very little, because we haven't pursued them the last couple of years.
They have one more. There's one more project that I'm gonna try to slip in. If possible, the projector can, that room needs to be replaced. And try to save.
That wasn't part of the grant?
Not originally, but all of this is part of it.
I think the Friends, we had the Friends.
Yeah, right.
So that's a bit older.
Yes.
And I, I'll report that I've connected with an architect. That might be a possibility, one, might be a good possibility. To get started on the renovation, which we tie right into that, as well as the strategic.
The strategic planning are. Enders or vendors consulting.
The other thing that has to happen under group business today is the nominating committee. November is when we always nominate. And although we've had discussions already, so it should probably not be a too difficult job this year. But we're gonna ask Mary to chair. And Amanda, Kami to be on.
Just so, I'll, if you guys want to figure out.
Lynn put together a pretty good slate in the mail the other day, so. She's got it pretty much worked out, so it should be. That's all I have. Does the board want to review and discuss our final on Jill's contract? We're going to take your session, do that, come back out hopefully and vote to approve it. Or since the notice was so late, do you want to put that off for the next month? Oh, different is it from what we thought? Is it significantly different? No, it basically responds to exactly what we talked about. We went through a few iterations to get there. But we answered the question regarding civil service. And we've added the benefits into the contract. And I think those were the two key items. I mean, I'm fine. So we can do that. And the only other thing that I've got to say, and I'm apologizing, because I didn't realize when this was happening. But someone has scheduled and reserved hotel rooms up in Lake Placid for the next board meeting for me. So I will have to attend Shay's last board meeting.
You have beautiful view. My brother just got married in Lake Placid.
Well, this is a trip that we've done now several years. But it happens to be this week. It's the second week, not the third week. So it totally was out of the head when we planned the trip.
It's also the night of the East Green Bush orchestra concert, so I probably. I'll bring you at another time.
I look forward to it.
Will you be running the meeting, Shay?
I will, I, what I thought I would do is I would introduce the meeting or something and start it and turn it over to Shay.
Oh, so you're gonna be attending.
I'm gonna, oh, yeah, I'm gonna attend in a moment.
Can I just ask Megan some of the business? Should we add to agenda at some point or will it be a committee?
Yes.
Which committee?
It's not gonna happen till next year. And from the list I saw, you're shifting. No, no.
No, that gets to January.
For the first time, as long as I can remember. Whoever is the new president will appoint the committees during the first meeting.
So the, our, the slate from the nominating committee is presented next week, in December.
No, no, it is done at the first meeting. The first order of business will be to have the nominating committee. Well, I guess the first order of business will be to oath of office for. Yeah, Charlie and I believe I. No, never done to December. It's always done. Because that's when Charlie takes over. I think I have to take one, I never did before. We started saying, when we do another term, we'll do it.
We want to deal with the one.
No.
No, we do not, oh, the beginning of each term.
Okay.
Yes, you were appointed. So we'll start with the oath of office. And then I'll ask for the report of the nominating committee. And since someone else is gonna be president, I will turn the meeting over to that person.
This is not really your last meeting.
Oh, jeez, for three minutes. Everybody's sitting and thanking you.
See, I'm getting a little weepy over here.
Okay, with that, it's four minutes to nine. I'll make a motion.
I'm gonna stop the meeting recording.
Okay.
Thank you.